I call to order the Highland Park Board of Education meeting today, Monday, August 25. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to participate in the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting, setting forth the time, date, and location to be submitted for publication to the Home News Tribune and Courier-News, and posted on the board's website at least forty-eight hours in advance of this meeting. Members of the public who wish to address the board will be given the opportunity to do so before the board adjourns for the evening. May I have roll call, please?
Dr. Beatty.
Here.
Ms. Cassell Dunn.
Here.
Dr. Coleman. Dr. Pixley.
Here.
Ms. Prus.
Here.
Dr. Schoolman.
Here.
Ms. Daniel.
Here.
Ms. Vardman. Ms. Voorhees.
Well, now recess to executive session. Be it resolved pursuant to the Sunshine Act NJSA 10:4-12 and 13, the Highland Park Board of Education will now meet in closed session to discuss matters related to personnel. These exemptions are permitted to be disclosed in closed session in accordance with NJSA 10:4-13. Information regarding the board's closed-session discussion will be disclosed to the public as soon as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. I move that we recess to executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Be back. We will now reconvene to regular session. May I have roll call, please?
Dr. Beatty.
Here.
Ms. Cassell Dunn.
Here.
Dr. Coleman. Dr. Pixley.
Here.
Ms. Prus.
Here.
Dr. Schoolman.
Here.
Ms. Daniel.
Here.
Ms. Vardman.
Here.
Ms. Voorhees.
Okay, we'll stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, there have been no communications since our last meeting. We will go ahead to the approval of minutes. So these minutes are from the hybrid workshop voting meeting and executive section for July 28, 2025. I move that we approve those minutes.
Second.
Dr. Beatty.
Yes.
Ms. Cassell Dunn.
Yes.
Dr. Pixley.
Yes.
Ms. Prus.
Yes.
Dr. Schoolman.
Yes.
Ms. Daniel.
Yes.
Ms. Vardman.
Yes.
Okay, we are going to do our superintendent's report.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. First and foremost, before I get started with the more formal part of my student, the superintendent's report, your spots was a welcome back to a new school year from our football players in our athletic department. So the football players want you to come out and support them at some games, and so they're offering you a sideline pass. And Dr. Bordler wrote a letter, and the students signed it all together. They kind of co-wrote it and got you a sideline pass. So we're excited to kick off the school year, and they're excited to see you at some sporting events.
Thank you.
All right, so tonight I have a couple presentations that all kind of are grouped into one theme of culture and climate. So first and foremost, I would like to present and toss over the mic to Dr. Jason Richardson, who this spring successfully defended his dissertation with doing work in our high school credit recovery program that has really profound and amazing. So I'd like to turn over the mic to Dr. Richardson. And before I do that, too, Dr. Richardson's going to do his presentation, and then we're going to, the three of us actually, are going to kick off for the culture and climate presentation, and then we'll open it up for questions or comments.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Suska. Can everybody see me? Sorry. That was a part of my back.
Yeah, you can see some of those chairs. Like, we're the only ones here. At home, we're the only ones here.
Hi, everyone. I am the newly-minted Dr. Richardson. I got to get used to saying that this year. I want to thank Dr. Suska, the board, the committee members, viewers at home, and all the family and friends and owls that are watching this presentation. It is about the credit recovery program at Highland Park High School, which I take great pride in. It's something that was an original program that I started to help students stay on track for graduation. And so the...
Okay. All right, now you're on next. Okay, there we go.
Sorry. Thank you, everybody. So the purpose of this program was to take, it was a qualitative study meant to explore the HBHS credit recovery program through the lens of our student participants. And with that, I addressed the questions that are posted on the screen in addition to identifying what factors contributed to students' loss of credit and ineffective attendance, what activities they did while in the program, and why they did them, what aspects of the program that they attribute to the learning process, and what factors of the program they would improve if given the opportunity to. So to be in the program, to be clear, this wasn't solely an academic intervention. It was based on attendance. So students that have ineffective attendance by default can forfeit credits. This program is an appellate process that is a, that will help students recover credits and, I'm sorry, recover seat time and thus restore said credits. So when a student becomes eligible, they're reached out to and given the opportunity to volunteer to participate in this program. Once they enroll in the program, they're asked to do a five-to-seven prompt personal statement that serves as an intake form. This form takes on three different lives. Number one, it gives the students opportunity to be metacognitive about the behavioral and social circumstances that impact their academic progress. Two, it provides the student support team and the staff that support the credit recovery program an opportunity to provide targeted interventions throughout the year for social-emotional support. And number three, it gives the credit recovery teacher an opportunity to provide, to provide a curated experience that's aligned with a student's interests and their personal needs.
Yes.
Three, six, two, two, one, zero.
It's okay. Invite to resume?
Yeah.
This, is this harder than the dance ones?
He had no technical difficulties, which was good.
So the findings from the study revealed that the program, the program was generally effective in neutralizing the three common factors associated with school dropout. Number one are push factors. So push factors are literally experiences that drive students or push them away from the, the school environment, such as prolonged disciplinary measures like out-of-school suspensions, social isolation associated with disciplinary measures that involve public shaming or social circumstances such as bullying that causes social shaming and have students discouraged from participating in the school community. Pull factors are factors that literally pull students away from the school community, commonly associated with cost-benefit analysis scenarios such as taking care of a caregiver, financial insecurity, or being with child. Or fallout factors, which are commonly associated with prolonged or chronic in-school concerns that drive students to fall out of school, such as chronic failure or a lack of institutional support. So what my study found is that the students that did find success in the program, and just so you know, all the participants did successfully complete the program, attributed the combination of three key components of the program to their success. And number one was the self-reflective activities, number two, the personalized learning pathways, and number three, staff support. When used in its totality together, students really felt a sense of self-efficacy and perseverance to not only successfully complete the program, but to have sustained growth thereafter. It's freezing again, but I can still keep going. I can still keep going. Don't worry, I got you. Oh, okay. So as, as successful as the program presented to be, it did come with its limitations. This isn't a cure-all. It's not perfect. The main thing that was, the main thing that was limited for students is those that had extreme socioeconomic or social-emotional hardships. And I want to be clear, as stated before, this program is an academic safety net based on insufficient attendance and student engagement. It is not a social service entity. Students that had issues such as financial insecurity, we were limited in our ability to be able to support those students solely through the program, and is not meant to be a program that is therapeutic or to be used, and to be used in exchange or to augment therapeutic services for anybody experiencing a social-emotional hardship. However, for credit restoration and sustained personal growth and academic support, this program was able to meet the students' needs based on what they stated. These quotes that you see as I go through the slides, I'm stuck here, but just, I'm stuck here on the video. Oh, no. Okay, so I'm still here. Thank you. These quotes, first of all, they are pseudonyms, so these aren't real students' names, but these were collected from, from focus group sessions and individual interviews that was done with the students that chose to participate in this study. And so for implication to practice, the program improvements is to have a more streamlined approach. So the program has five modules. When the students complete the intake form, they have activities ranging from college and career readiness, academic enrichment, growth and development, civic engagement, and service learning. So whatever their post-secondary needs or interests or curiosities are, we got an activity for you. Streamlining it means basically taking out the underutilized portions of the program and creating more experiences that students find engaging. So case in point, one of our students who felt underwhelmed by some of the options were provided, I gave them an opportunity to come up with activities based on their interest to work with the, with the credit recovery teacher, to come up with an experience and, and program activities that suit their needs. And we offered the opportunity, if it was popular and other students wanted to partake in it, that we would keep it, and we did. So, so that was very helpful. Embed, embed self-reflection all throughout the activities. The students really enjoy the opportunity to write out some of their personal feelings and thoughts, things that some of the students shared that they didn't feel comfortable orally sharing with other people, but writing it down in their own time in a place of comfort gave them the opportunity to really share more than they intended on doing on their own, when, when the opportunity came to be a part of the program. So they did enjoy that a lot. Having more opportunities to give students to share would give us more data to provide more targeted approach and support them better. Strengthening accountability with progress tracking, that note basically speaks for itself. And so implications for practice. So when reviewing the findings, I thought to myself, this was a really cool program from a safety net perspective. However, how could we utilize this on a larger scale to have more systemic growth and systemic change to better support students, something more proactive? And so with that being said, having, having more initiatives that are social-emotional learning-based, and especially providing teachers, staff, and administration with trauma-informed, what, trauma-informed professional development practices and pedagogy may help neutralize the need for, for a safety net initiatives that are academic and social-emotional-based. And so with that in mind, my advice to anybody doing a credit recovery program or a district interested in doing a program of this particular nature, having a holistic approach, that means the combination of social-emotional support as well as academic, helping build in relationships between students and staff, being able to offer authentic assessments, personalized learning pathways are the key factors in reaching a student and building, to build, to build academic and personal growth for our students and our new-age learners. And so the HBHS Credit Recovery Program highlights that, and I'm proud to say that it's still going on and going strong and changing every year through the support of a dedicated staff and the students who still, through surveys and self-reflective activities, offer their own fingerprint into this program and its success. And so with that being said, I want to thank you all for your time, your attention, and most importantly, your consideration. Thank you. So as a P.S., I do want to spend a special shout-out to all the students who are very vulnerable and willing to give of themselves and share their personal story so I could create this. I will never forget you. And just, just so you know, like, a lot of those students, it was hard getting students to want to participate and go on the record and things of that nature, but ultimately, they believed the same thing that I'm presenting to you, that we have an opportunity to provide generational growth, systemic growth. Some of these students are generational credit recovery students. This isn't something that just, like, happens in a vacuum. And so if we can take a more proactive approach and something that could permeate throughout the school environment, I think it would do us some, some real good. And, you know, I really appreciate the opportunity to do my study here at Highland Park High School. Dr. Suska, thank you for supporting me through my scholastic journey, through all four seasons of that journey, and I'm glad that it concluded. Yes. It was an epic. That's for sure. I was on an odyssey. And so with that, I did want to present for anybody that is interested, have a copy of my book, The Credit Recovery Experience at High Point High School, a qualitative study that will be available in the Media Center. So I wanted to present this to you, Dr. Suska.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Richardson, and we really appreciate the donation to the library. In addition to the board, Dr. Richardson is going to share the PDF version of his entire dissertation, if you would like to read it in full. I know it's a lot, and you have a lot of reading to do already, but normally when, this is actually the first committee I ever sat on for a doctorate degree, and it was really profound, and I spent weekends when he sent the final, the final draft over for review to the committee. And I read it, and I sat there on a Saturday with a cup of coffee, and I was moved to tears in his chapter four, when he shared some of the raw data and the coding that came out of the students' voices of what they had to say about their experiences personally and in their academic journey, both positive and unfortunately, the successes, right? So there were a bunch of students in his study that had tremendous success, and I was flying high for them, and I was crying in tears of happiness. And then unfortunately, there were some students that were unsuccessful, and that brought me to a whole nother level of tears, so much so that I texted Dr. Richardson, and I said, "I know it's Saturday." I said, "But I'm reading the words that are, that the students are saying, and I am moved to tears. This is really profound." So I didn't want to take too much time with that tonight, but you can certainly check out his book in the library or review his dissertation, and I'll send it to you. I strongly recommend reading some of the, the information that came out of there. Yeah, okay. Oh, and one more thing. Okay.
Yeah, sorry. And for those that heard, I did say it correctly. It is High Point High School. Just so you know, if you're looking for it because of pseudonym purposes, all the students' identities were unprotected, so it is High Point High School. That wasn't a mistake. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So I want to just switch gears because the work that Dr. Richardson was, that did was really profound. And in his chapter five, one of the things he gave is a recommendation to the, to the school community and to the district was this idea of healing-centered engagement. How do we, and I think he spoke of that last, on how do we capture students before they get to that point, right? We're hoping that they don't have to get to credit recovery, but when you read the stories that the students are saying, it's a lot about being just disenfranchised with school, you know? And there are some extenuating circumstances that led them there to, you know, personally. How do we connect them to the school because we know those things are happening? We can't prevent that, but we can do is reconnect them. And how do we help them? And that's that idea of culture and climate. So Angelo, I'm not sure if I need to do anything here to switch to my presentation, but I'd like to transition us because I think that it piggybacks nicely on this work. So what I actually asked Dr. Richardson to do was to be my co-chair and pilot and help with, with Ms. Coppola and Ms. Asamoah to look at culture and climate. And actually, I'm going to lean to and invite both of them up to present with me. I'm just going to follow suit here and do the same, the same instructions here without being tasked. Do I have to hit the clicker, or are you going to hit it for me? Oh, that's not it. That's it. Okay, there we go. All right, thank you. So I wanted to talk a little bit about our culture and climate updates. I do. Okay. So remember that our culture and climate is one of our strategic plan goals. Oh, me? Okay. Okay, thank you. Which was to provide a safe, inclusive, identify-affirming, identifying-affirming, equitable, and supportive educational environment that uses its diversity as a strength. And what tonight I'd like to share is updates to three of those goals. The first one is research programs that could be used to provide staff with training and crisis prevention, research ways to elevate students' voices, and research evidence-based interventions for students that struggle with school refusal and attendance issues. So the work that Dr. Richardson did was really inspiring for us, and what happened was the NJDOE put out a report or an opportunity for a grant for Dreams, and I really loved it. And Ms. Coppola, actually, got, saw it, and she goes, "Can we do this?" And I said, "Absolutely. Would you like to head and be the lead on it? Meanwhile, I'm getting the backend of what Dr. Richardson is doing, thinking this is all, like, really great stuff." So I'm really proud and so excited that Amy took this and ran with it. She did the whole grant, and tonight, hopefully, you will approve it formally as a three-year, three-year program. So tonight, we're going to talk about our Dreams Grant and our implementation plan. So what is Dreams? Hi, everybody. So I have some note cards just to keep me on task and to help me speak in front of all of you tonight. So thank you so much for, for having me here. So what is Dreams? So Dreams stands for Developing Resiliency with Engaging Approaches to Maximize Success Program. It's a trauma-informed initiative, and it's organized by the State of New Jersey and the Department of Children and Families. It's no cost to the district, and it's a support program that offers training and resources to promote a healing-centered school environment. Highland Park has been chosen to participate, and we are so excited. Did you click?
I'm sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's just, it's just this slide. Yeah. Okay, so we've been chosen. We're really, really excited. The overall purpose of Dreams is to help districts develop trauma-informed, healing-centered practices to support staff and students and classrooms to support positive student learning. And the why. I'll kind of flip back to here. So I think that's one of the things that we've been talking a lot about is connecting the students to school. We do have students that are coming with trauma or school refusal or, you know, a whole myriad of issues. And, you know, previously, we've been implementing some really great student-centered strategies, including restorative practices, conscious discipline, advisory, responsive classroom. So there's a lot of SEL and these best practice initiatives that we're doing. However, what we found is that we kind of needed to reframe and re-energize this work to better align with the lived experiences of both our students and our staff. So we kept finding that something was missing. So early on, when we, when we were doing this work on restorative practices, that's really great, and it works when we talk about our students that are, end up needing restorative practices, right? But what are we doing to prevent them from needing restorative practices, right? So it's that idea of sort of reframing that, because what happened before any of our leadership, when it came to some of these things, is, you know, getting that buy-in and leading to, well, oh, that means you're not disciplining students, right? They could just write a letter and nothing's going to happen, right? Or getting that buy-in to say, well, you know, that, that seems too soft for what I'm doing, right? So there was a whole lot of things happening. In addition, the restorative practices is great. The assistant principals and building-level administrators were really the ones spearheading it. We had some staff that were trained, but it became this idea of, like, I'm going to do a circle in the classroom and not about intentionality on how we communicate and work with children. So we do a lot with that at the elementary level, but we were still finding that even with conscious discipline and responsive classroom, it wasn't enough for our students that were coming with some significant trauma. So this offers us a powerful way to build upon the work that we're doing to be more intentional. So it's not replacing those, but it's more of an umbrella. So it allows us, like Ms. Coppola said, to integrate trauma-informed care. We want to elevate student voice in the process and strengthen our community partnerships, and that's through that idea of promoting dignity, belonging, and accountability. And hopefully, by, by using and deepening our approach with how we communicate with children and students, we hope to foster more trust, strengthen those relationships, and create a more inclusive and supportive learning environment for all students. So the Dreams Grant essentially is implementing the nurture-hard approach. So from now on, moving forward, we'll probably call it NHA, but the nurtured-hard approach, which is intentionality about how we communicate with students. So as Dr. Suska shared, nurtured-hard approach, also known as NHA, is simply put, an intentional, mindful way for us to connect with students and with staff. It also connects all of our program initiatives, like Dr. Suska shared, and it's really just a delivery service for all of the district initiatives like responsive classroom, all the SEL work that we are doing, our restorative practices. It's not a curriculum. It's a method, and it will be district-wide for all grade levels and all ages, and it also is part of our MTSS, our Tier One and our Tier Two interventions. NHA is a relationship-based framework that focuses on student strengths, resilience, and engagement. It really shifts our focus from noticing or reacting to the negative and energizing the positives that we see in the classroom, even the smallest.
and energizing the positives that we see in the classroom, even the smallest. Click. NHA has three strands, which are the foundational principles that guide this practice. These strands really focus on shifting our energy to the positive, gaining the strength-based interactions that we want to have with students, but also at the same time, setting clear boundaries. Yeah. Well, yeah, okay. So strand one is called absolutely no. And this means that you refuse to energize any negativity. You deliberately not give attention or energy or connection to negative behaviors. Strand two is absolutely yes. This is where you super energize success. You intentionally recognize and energize positive behavior, no matter how small. And strand three is absolute clarity. This emphasizes fair and consistent boundaries. It emphasizes clarity and consistency, clear expectations and follow-through when rules are broken and time for students to reset.
Ask a question.
All right, well, we're just going to finish the presentation.
Yeah, last one. Overall, NHA helps educators and families. And if they utilize this approach, they can transform challenging behaviors into opportunities for growth and most importantly, connection.
So our implementation plan, obviously led by myself, Ms. Coppola, Ms. Asamoah and Dr. Richardson. We have two Dreams teams. So what they require is that you have two teams. Well, you can have up to three, but that didn't make sense to us. So we decided to do an elementary and a secondary. So we send out a survey at the end of the year to request volunteers. And we received 33 responses, which was fantastic, given it was like two days to the end of school, that they were, told us we had to get this done. So we were very excited that we got such great responses. So we decided on 12 staff collectively between Irving and Bartle. That include administrators, teachers, child study team and support staff. And then at the secondary level, we have 12 middle school and high school staff that include administration, child study team and teachers. So we're really excited with that. So in terms of our year one, so we've already created our initial teams, which we're very excited about. Where Ms. Coppola and Ms. Asamoah and I have already received four sessions this summer of training, which we're really excited about and, and intentional about our communication already. And the rest of the team will start getting their training at our September in-service. And then later that month, what happens during that time together with our teams is the development of a plan. So we're not going in with a plan of like, this is our goal for the year. The idea is they get training on that and then we've identified two members of our team that get a really intense training in December. And then they become a train-the-trainer. So the idea is instead of having to, in the past, we've really relied on these external companies or coaches to come in and provide this ongoing PD for our teachers. And it just really hasn't been sustainable, really, because, and I'm sure Dr. Richardson can attest to this, the people that we've tried to use in the past, like have ghosted us or not, right? You know what I'm talking about, right? Have showed up and they've come for the one-off session. But the coaching that we've been asking and requiring and trying to set aside money for, they just haven't really committed to for a variety of reasons. So we love this because, you know, I myself am going to be included. I'm hoping I can get the third spot. I'm going to wiggle myself in there. Because I really feel that if it starts from the top, if I can model this. Right? Then I can coach the admins and the admins can coach the teachers and so on. So I think it's really important that myself and Ms. Coppola, Dr. Richardson and Ms. Asamoah are really committed to this and get the training as well. So we can mirror it. One of the things I've already been intentional about at the leadership team meeting, we practiced the nurtured-heart approach with an activity that we did in my communications to the staff at our back-to-school presentation. It's embedded throughout there. And then my language that I'm going to use this year is going to be a lot of intentionality about the language that I use that's very nurtured-heart. So we're going to come up with a plan and then we're going to do a small-scale implementation for our year one. So like I said, we've already had some trainings in July. In August, some nuts and bolts of the three strands of NHA. And what they do is they helped us unpack the NJ Sky data to look at our school data, which I know the Equity and Excellence Committee has seen as well. So we're doing some work on that. September, we'll get a three-hour training with our Dreams team. In the winter and spring, there are six-hour training for two Dreams trainers. We develop our plan and applications of that training, what we, what it is that we want to try out for the year. Then we implement the nurtured-heart approach. We train, we integrate those skills. We have monthly meetings, so we've already set aside with the team the calendar invites. We've already set it up ready for the year. So thank you, Ms. Coppola, for doing that work with me. And that's one hour each month. We then will implement our plan. And then May, June, we have a showcase actually with other school districts that are implementing their Dreams teams. So we went in May to see some of the showcase and the presentations were phenomenal. What the work that's being done around the state is truly inspiring and so we're really excited. So in the spring, we will showcase what we did and we're very excited, our successes, strategies and outcomes. We will also share that presentation in the spring with the board. And what will success look like for this? This is something that we're very cognizant about this time around because I think one of the things I've said for some time about some of our other approaches was that, you know, things were done. The best I can, I can probably explain it is that you, you build a house, but you don't put the foundation. So it looks pretty on the outside and then all of a sudden the wind blows and it crumbles because it wasn't built on a foundation. So what I want to do is leave the district with a foundation, build it with, so that it's sustainable. And one of those things is making sure we're intentional about what success looks like. So not only do we have a three-year plan, we have an in-house coaching model. It's free, which we're very excited about. And, and the fact that we are going to use data to, to drive that and monitor it very closely. So I'm really excited about all of those pillars. So we will collect and analyze our SEL data, the NJ Sky, climate and culture results, the discipline data, the attendance data. Empower all staff to de-escalate situations. So we're hoping potentially we can see that qualitatively, just by our observations. But also in seeing maybe hopefully less discipline referrals. If they're able to de-escalate them, they don't have to escalate it to Dr. Richardson, that he can empower the middle school staff to de-escalate their own situations by using the nurtured-heart approach. And our, really our intentionality is about keeping students in the classroom. Because what we find is that there's, that power isn't with the, at the tier-one, tier-two level like Ms. Coppola was saying. And they send them out. It's like, they're not behaving, send them out. And now Dr. Richardson would have to, you know, handle this and try to communicate, like this is not what we want to do. So we really want to try to keep students in the classroom. And then we want to develop a district-wide common language. We feel that's really important as well. Years two and three, so we don't know what year one's going to look like yet, so we will, to be determined. However, I will say we're going to expand the foundation built during our first year. We're going to create broader goals and strategies to deepen our nurtured-heart approach practices, which means we're going to train more staff and then we're going to be engaging families. So we're getting trained first, we're going to start implementing and then the second year, we're bringing in more staff and families. We get the support of a Dreams mentor for the three years. So our Dreams mentor Gabby Rios will be with us for three years and we get her support and coaching along the way, as well as access to resources and training modules through the Rutgers website. So it's a lot. So there's a lot going on amongst the three of us. So I'll open it up to questions or comments. I'm going to try to bring my notebook over here so I can write things down as we talk and try to answer things. So I'll leave Ms. Coppola and Dr. Richardson with the mic for a moment.
Yeah, I have a question. So this sounds really promising and that looks really exciting. I just have a couple of questions. I guess this is a two-part question. I'm just curious how the absolute no and absolute yes, et cetera, works in like a real-life situation? Like what kind of example would that, how would that look? And then also, how would you implement that with students who struggle with special needs or neurodiverse, social, emotional issues, who just struggle with making the connections?
I would say for your second part, consistency in that common language that Dr. Suska was talking about is definitely the approach for, for those specialized programs and our students. But I would say, going back to the examples for like absolutely yes, no matter how small it is, it's really just naming what you see and identifying the behavior that you want to continue to see. So being very intentional and explicit in the feedback that you're providing. The energy, not providing the energy to the no, and I'm excited to learn more about this too. I've only had the, the few trainings that Dr. Suska went to as well and Ms. Asamoah. So I am also excited to ask questions like this and learn more. But just from my experience in the classroom as well, it's just, you know, making the. Having the, the connection between, or breaking the connection, I guess, between the negative behavior and the attention for the student. So having the patience and the flexibility and the responsiveness to, if you see a behavior happening, you're not going to give your energy or your attention to it in that moment. Maybe you'll have a private conversation with the student, you know, and at another time or maybe separately. But it's not something that you're going to draw attention to in the, in the moment. You're going to redirect, you're going to refocus. And then as soon as you see that small act of positivity, you're going to name it and identify it. So you draw the attention to the positivity.
Sounds like a systemic culture change.
It is a shift. It is. And that's why the training is so important. And that's why that five-hour or six-hour training that Dr. Suska was talking about, it is an extensive training. It is a big commitment because those trainers then will be turnkeying it for the staff.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So I'm just curious, actually, how many have, were chosen for this? Because it sounds like a great, I mean, was it? I mean.
It was a very extensive application. Yeah, it was pretty, pretty lengthy and detailed. We are working with Rutgers UBHC with our OWL program at the middle school and the high school. So they were really my point of contact when this came out. Well, I was seeing like broadcasts and whatnot from the state about it, so I was interested right away. But Rosemary, our, our point of contact with UBHC, really is the person who brought it to my attention and said, you guys should do this. This is really aligned with the work that you are doing currently and it's a great program. Actually, our Dreams mentor I've worked with in a different capacity through my role as the McKinney-Bento liaison. So that really, I think, is a great relationship that we already have. So that's, that's how I heard of it. Yeah.
And one other question. I'm, I'm very curious if there, just to learn more about this nurtured-heart approach, if there's like any articles or anything, because it sounds like a substantive body of literature and I am a nerd and I.
I could definitely reach out to Gabby and see if there's, you know, I'm sure there is, definitely things that we could share with you all.
Be great.
Yeah.
Nikki asked my question, so I.
I just want to, to say, I'm really excited about this. I think, I was, I was a little bit curious about the absolute no. I don't think not addressing behavior issues, because I've seen pre-service teachers try not to be biased by not addressing behavior and it's a disaster. So I was really happy that it's more about shifting, addressing behavior, it sounds like, from a public space to a more individual space and, and not necessarily attaching the attention to it, because it could be attention-seeking behavior, right? So I, I, I'm excited about this because I also think about some of the discipline data we've seen and, and how we're reproducing some of the behavior issues, but in the way we address those. And so I think both taking some of that addressing off the public stage, also de-escalating the behavior, right? Not calling him out, approaching with care, right? Trying to get to the kind of, the, the source of kind of what the student's feeling and acting on, you know? Or it's really, really important if you look at any kind of classroom management kind of stuff. So this sounds like it's very much kind of aligned with that. And the other piece I wanted to highlight too, even though I think Dr. Suska, you might have skipped over the year one slides a little bit, but, but was that this is a much more long-term professional development approach. This is three years of planned PD, which is about what we know it takes to actually fully implement something. And some of the coaching and the kind of continuous kind of meetings, you know, throughout the year. Like that's what you need to actually fully implement. And then the whole idea of turnkeying within the district rather than consistently going outside. So I think this is the kind of model for the types of things we want to do if we fully want to implement things. And so I just wanted to, to say I really appreciate that and, and the attention that was kind of going into this whole effort. I think it aligns a lot with district goals, with the kind of approaches we need, we need to do and to improve some of the things.
Great. And I was going to say, I was going to ask a question about the measure of success, but you addressed it. And I love that you built that into, you know, thinking about the actual data and tracking it as we go along. So I think it's just, it's, yeah, it's something we can, we can track and we'll have those conversations and, and see improvement, you know, hopefully.
It's very exciting. Yeah, we're, we're very, very eager to get started.
There's no other questions or comments. I'd like to thank Dr. Richardson and Ms. Coppola for sharing their expertise and their presentation. So thank you. And you're both more than welcome to stay for the duration of tonight's meeting. I know you've had long days and even longer tomorrow, we have new staff coming and lots of exciting things. So please feel free to excuse yourself to go home. Thank you. All right. Yeah, I'm ready. One more. I got one more tonight. Ready to go, ready to go. I'm pumped. Hang in with me, hang with me. All right, tonight's final, I figured it was a really good timing actually to piggyback on the SSDS data that we have to share. That we have to share twice a year. So this is our spring 2025 SSDS data. So just to reorient ourselves, that I do twice a year, SSDS stands for Student Safety Data System. We collect two types of information through that system. Incidents of violence, vandalism, harassment, intimidation or bullying, weapon offenses, substance restraint, et cetera. Our HIB trainings and programs. And again, like I said, it happens twice a year. So we're on the, what you'll see tonight is the January 1 to June 30th data that I'll present. In addition, I'm going to present the data collectively for this whole past year. In addition, I've thrown on a couple of slides there to show how this year's, this past year's data compares to last year's, the year before data. So just again to reorient, because sometimes the numbers look big. That is concerning. However, sometimes multiple offenses have, multiple offenders are for one incident. So if you see something there that might be like 70, I mean theoretically, it could be one incident that had 70 offenders or something like that. So not that wasn't the case, but in those types of situations, it's talking about the number of students involved. So a single incident can consist of multiple incident types. For example, a student might take a, make a criminal threat toward another student while holding a knife. So also now that's one incident, but now in two separate areas of the report as well. And like I said, multiple offenders, multiple incidences. So just to reorient ourselves, I mean, some of the definitions are here. But I think it's important to understand when you're looking at the data, a fight is a mutual engagement of physical altercation that results in bodily injury, that may result in bodily injury. It doesn't include a verbal confrontation or a minor confrontation, such as a shoving match. So if they shove, that's not a fight. Assault is when one person's to attempt to cause, or purposely knowing or recklessly cause bodily injury to another person. A physical restraint is if we've had to use a handle with care to physically restrain a child. So the staff that are able to do that are certified in handle with care, to be able to do so in a legal manner and a safe manner. A simple threat is an attempting by a physical menace, usually verbal threats to put another in fear of bodily injury. Like the offender knew that the threat could make the victim fearful. So that would be a simple threat. And then one of our bigger categories that you'll probably see quite often is other incidences leading to removal, which is any incident not listed in the SSDS guidebook by the DOE that takes place on or off school grounds that results in a disciplinary removal for at least one half of the day, that must be reported. So if a student is cutting class multiple times or something happens and they get RISE, which is our in-school suspension, that is reported as an other incident leading to removal. If there is something that happens on social media outside of the school or something like that, that, that isn't a threat or violence or anything like that, it would go into other incidences leading to removal if it impacts the school day and they have to be removed from the learning environment. So for January 1 through June 30th, I broke the violent incidents out. So the high school had seven total incidences for the second half of the year, middle school had 12, Bartle had five and Irving had none. Of the viol, of the, sorry, violence, high school had one, middle school had nine, Bartle had three and Irving had none. Of the violence for the high school, the one that they did had was a fight. For the middle school, of the violence incidences, one was assault, seven were fights and one was a threat. And for Bartle, one was an assault, one was a fight and one was a threat. For vandalism, the high school had none and middle school had two and then zero for Bartle and Irving. For substance use, middle school had five, middle school had none. Bartle had none and Irving had none. Weapons, all schools had none the second half of the year. Of the HIBs confirmed, high school had one, middle school had one, Bartle had two and Irving had none. The high school had 11 other incidences leading to removal. The middle school had thirteen. The middle school had 32 for the second half of the year. Bartle had seven and Irving had none. For HIBs alleged, high school, so these are ones that aren't confirmed but are alleged and unconfirmed. For the second half of the year, high school had one, middle school had none, Bartle had one, and Irving had one. Now, if it was one in June toward the end of the year, it's not on this report. It actually goes on the fall report, just because of the timing of when this data has to go in. Trainings completed for the second half of the year. The high school reported no trainings and no programs completed. The middle school for the second half of the year had one training and eight programs completed. Bartle had four trainings and 34 programs completed. And Irving had three trainings and 11 programs completed. So a comparison chart for the whole of last year, as you can see. So in red are the incidences or the numbers from September to December, and in black are January to June. So for total incidences, the high school had a total of 14. I should have put a total. I apologize that I didn't. But seven the first half, seven the second half. Middle school had 14 total incidences the first half and 12 the second. Bartle had five and five, and Irving had none. And then you can see the numbers from there broken out. So of the total incidences, this was the breakdown. So for the high school, you know, three were violence and nine were substance. Substances for middle school, 13 were violence, two vandalism, seven substance, and three weapons. And for Bartle of the 10, you had, I'm sorry, and then one HIB confirmed for high school, one HIB confirmed for middle school. And there were seven confirmed total for the year at Bartle. And three of those incidences were violence as well for Bartle. And then none across the board for Irving. For other incidences leading to removal, you can see that the high school had 15. They had five alleged HIBs for the year, only one restraint for the year, no trainings, and 10 programs completed that they reported. The middle school had, there looks like 65 total incidences. For leading to removal, they had one alleged HIB for the year, three restraints, four trainings completed, and 14 programs. Bartle had 10 incidences for the total for the year, three alleged HIBs, two restraints. And they're at 21 trainings completed and I got like 36, 70 programs completed. And then Irving had one alleged HIB, 10 restraints, four trainings completed. And they're sitting at like 22, right, 21, 21 programs completed, 21, 22 programs completed. So they, so that was the overall comparison for this past year. And what I wanted to really show and highlight was the difference between the 2023, 24 data and this past year, 24, 25. So you can see in blue is the prior year's data versus this year's data. So for the high school, last year, the year before, they had, we're starting a new school year, so two years prior now. They had 27 total incidences. This past year, they had 14. And you can see the breakdown. Last year, seven of them were violence. This past year, three were violence in the past 23, 24. One was vandalism. This past year, none was vandalism. Substances, 12 for the previous year, nine for this past year. One weapons last year, none this year. Last year, the 23, 24, they had eight confirmed HIBs, and this past school year, only two confirmed HIBs. For the middle school, in 23, 24, they had 57 total incidences. This past year, they had 26, which is great. Last year, 23, 24, they had 32 violence, 13. This past year, five were vandalism versus the two this past year. 15 that were substances versus the seven this past year. One weapons versus the three this year, and three confirmed HIB versus one for this past year. At Bartle, in 23, 24, they had one total incident. This past year, they're up to 10. Last year, they had one that was violence. This past year, they had three. Vandalism, none. Substances, none. Weapons, none. And then this past year, they had seven confirmed HIBs. And none across the board for Irving altogether. For other incidences leading to removal, in the 23, 24 school year, the high school had 39. This past year, they had only 15. Middle school last year had 110 other incidences leading to removal. This year, they only had 65. Bartle last year had 66. This year, they had 10. And Irving, they had eight in 23, 24, and this past year, they had zero. For HIBs alleged that were unconfirmed, the high school had nine in 23, 24 versus the five this past year. Middle school had seven versus the one this year. Bartle, three and three, and Irving, none in 23, 24, but one this past year. And then trainings completed, high school reported one in 23, 24 versus zero this past year. High school had 24 in 23, 24, and four this past year. Bartle had 31 trainings completed in 23, 24, and 21 this past year. And then eight and four for Irving respectively. And then for the programs completed, the high school reported two in 23, 24, and 10 in 24, 25. Middle school reported seven completed programs in 23, 24, and 14 this past year. Bartle had 44 programs completed, 23, 24, and 70 this past year. And Irving had 15 last year and 30 this past year. And just to note, the trainings are any kind of like legal requirements or anything that they go to that are really specific to like how to write the HIB. So those are more like very specific, like legal type of trainings. The programs are really the SEL programming that they do, whole school meetings, advisory. So there's actually a lot on there that sometimes I think the anti-bullying specialists and stuff like that might not know that's included. Some maybe more know what's more included or that they do more than in other schools. But a lot of that SEL programming counts as part of the programs completed. So that's why that number is really high, especially at the elementary school when they probably do a lot more. Like SEL lab at Bartle, they have the whole school meetings, they have morning meeting. There's a lot more opportunities at Bartle for that programming to happen than maybe at the secondary. So that's why you might see like some of the numbers are a little bit higher at the elementary than secondary level. But that's the difference between a training and a program. So the trainings are really for staff and the programming is staff and students. That's it. Yes. Oh, questions and comments? Good. I'm good.
So exactly about the trainings and.
I'm gonna move to sit down because there's.
I know it can't be heard. So in regards to like the trainings and the programs, when it comes to the programs that includes the students, is that something that's planned through like ahead of time? Or is it just like they add it as if they see that there's more of a need for?
Yes, to both. So usually some of them are planned. So Ms. Asamoah actually just met with the leadership team at our meeting and talked about all the character ed programming that the teen center is doing and double downing, especially at the secondary level that they can do to help and support. Our UBHC is doing some work as well. So some of them are pre-planned on what we do for programming. And sometimes a lot of it comes in the moment when something is happening and we need to address it with students.
Is your feeling, because one of the things I noticed was that not as much programming completed at the middle school. And so one could look at that and say, hey, maybe we need more programming because that's where we see a hotspot. So is your feeling, because you hinted a little that maybe where they're not tracking it, but what's your feeling about that? Do you need more programming?
I think, I think next year, I think this next coming year with some change in the middle school staffing, especially at the school counseling level, I think you're going to see more of that. But also, not only I think that we're going to see more of it, it's actually going to be happening too. So there were things like the fact that advisories and there is alarming. But I think it's also what stood out for me as a superintendent was to make sure that there is not only, the past couple of years, I'd probably been focusing a lot on the legal training for administration and staff in terms of like what new comes out from legislation or, you know, things like that. Because there's a lot of legal around our HIBs. But that, they should have more training on SSDS reporting to know what qualifies so that when they, when building administrators review that data, because the data goes from our anti-bullying specialists, which is Rob Maruka, Tracy Maiden, you know, like our staff. It goes to them to essentially the secretary in the main office. The secretary enters the data, but it's on the principals to review the data. And then it goes to me for certification. So we were working on putting systems in place so that by the time it gets to me, when I look at it, I'm like, I don't know if this is true or not true, right? Like I can't go through every, you know, all 72 things to, you know, in one school to see if that is. So I'm leaning on my team to know, but maybe some more education to understand what qualifies in each of these categories that I know came out of the work that we did a couple of years ago when our data was reported inaccurately was we need to have checks and balances to make sure what we're reporting is accurate. And that if the team needs help in understanding what defines these categories, I need to make a better job of doing that. So that's the work we're doing early this fall.
Yeah, I mean, even as I was grinning my teeth a little bit at some of the numbers, it seemed, you know, you see like double digits, you know, in the middle school in particular. But my sense was at the same time, these look lower, you know? And so I really, I appreciate the, you know, the side to side comparison with the previous year. And they were lower. And we were looking at 50% cuts, you know, or decreases across the board, except for in Bartle, which is weird and is probably just random. So I guess, so even though the middle school is still higher than the other schools, you know, they had the same, you know, substantial decrease. I guess I have two questions and then a sort of a cautionary suggestion. So the question is like, what do you attribute all this to? I mean, of course, your amazing staff, right? No, but seriously, I mean, do you feel like we're just finally coming out of the pandemic? Life is going to back to normal? Have you been implementing some new programs and approaches that are finally bearing fruit and taking root? Do you have new staff or more stable staffing? I mean, what is going on that explains in each school, these declines in disciplinary numbers?
Yeah, I will try. I will say that I did not control for anything statistically. So I don't, I don't, I don't know what that would be. It's probably a combination of all of them. Like at the middle school this past year was the first time, even when we were looking at our math data, that we had our staff that were consistently here versus our long-term subs. People go on a medical leave, maternity leave, things like that. When you bring in the subs, that's a little bit harder because they haven't been exposed to, you know, our coaching and professional development. We've been doing a lot of work with our consultant on co-teaching models and check for understanding framework, which means when students don't understand something, we're capturing it in the moment and then pulling small groups to help them. So what we're finding is behaviors are decreasing because aside from trauma-informed students, I'm going to leave trauma-informed students in a separate category. But a general run-of-the-mill student typically misbehaves because they are either being under-challenged or they're over-challenged, right? Like meaning that like they're bored because the work is not challenging for them. Or they, or they're frustrated because the work is too hard for them because they haven't achieved, you know, they're just not getting it, right? So that's typically where we see a lot of those behaviors happening. And so what we're doing is even that work intentionally around instruction, to use data to drive that instruction and what do we do with that data, right? So it's in the moment, I'm doing a check, and we're actually using that word. If you see some videos, I think I sent one of Jen Si doing a small group. She said, okay, we're going to do a CFU now. We're going to do a check for understanding. And it's a quick one-two question thing. Did students get it? And then I'm pulling small groups of students that need to be challenged, right? So I'm going to pull up maybe a GNT group. I'm going to pull a struggling learning group, right? And so we're doing those things intentionally. That way, if a student is struggling, they're not left to go practice something that they're frustrated with. They're getting that support in real time. Our students that are getting it are then being challenged appropriately. So it's really that more like personalized and truly differentiated instruction. I think that's helpful too. I know we've been really focusing hard and doubling down the approval of those culture and climate specialists and using that title funding to support those have been really helpful because I think the students are feeling more connected to the school too. I mean, you should see them running around those middle school trying to find little pictures of Mr. DePain for the 100th days of school. They had to find 100 little pictures of Mr. DePain all over school. It sounds so silly, but they were so excited for it. So those initiatives, I think, kind of really helped as well. From that, that sort of core group, the issue that I think we're still having is those students that are coming in full flight or fight. It's very, it's very, it's a struggle for our staff. And so we've been doing a lot of that work with UBHC. And when this came up, Rosemary Flores, who's our contact and our liaison to our UBHC, and I told her, I said, we got the Dreams grant. I'm so excited. NHA, nurtured heart. She goes, I love that for you guys. That's exactly what you need. You have all the right pieces. This is just gonna kick you, kick you off.
Well, that was like my notes slash question. So like, I wanted to make sure that the nurtured heart isn't, you know, isn't changing the approach. It's clearly working. But in fact, what you're saying is it's targeted at the group of students that maybe we're still not reaching is what.
It is, but it's, but it's what's really nice about it is that it's for all students as well. In fact, actually, we were on the calls and this woman interrupts, asks a question. She goes, can I use this with my husband when he doesn't want to wash the dishes? Because it's being intentional about not giving energy to maybe a bad behavior, like not doing the dishes, you know? Watching TV or whatever it was she was giving the example and celebrating when her husband was doing something. And the trainer laughed and said, well, you know, if you're going to use it with adults, you have to be intentional in saying, I'm using the nurtured heart approach with you. But there's actually ways to use that language that is very intentional for secondary students. So it doesn't sound so elementary. Some things like instead of saying, please take out your pencil, to shifting the language of take out your pencil. Like sometimes it's just that shift in that language to be intentional. And that actually can impact all students. So I'm not saying that every single one of those students on that report is a tier three trauma-informed student. It's not. So yes, we're doing great, but we can do better. And that's the piece that we're missing is our teachers are yearning for something that can help them locally in the classroom. The best way, when I, when I listen to the NHA training, it reminded me a lot of the work that Grant Wiggins does around feedback. If anybody is familiar with his work as backward design model, feedback, right? We give a lot of praise, right? Great job. Good job. We evaluate A, B, C, D, F, right? Like we do those things really well. But what we don't do as teachers is be very intentional to say, why is what you did good? Or why was what you did not good? Or what part of it was good, right? The best example I can give off the top of my head is if I'm asking students to create a hypothesis for science, there's very key components of what is required for a great hypothesis. So it would be intentional about giving feedback. I see that you included an independent and dependent variable, but I didn't see that you included a rationale or a connection or something about it, right? So that means they say, okay, I'm doing a great job at this part of it, but I'm missing, not only did I get half credit, but now I know why I got half credit. Not just question mark or circle or X or something like that, right? It's that very approach where it's like, I see this, right? I see that there's some sort of negative issue happening. You're cursing a lot. But let me give energy to what you are doing well and how do I highlight it? You know, oh, I see that you're listening with intent because your eyes are focused on me. That's fantastic. I love that, right? And in giving that intention and very, it's almost like giving feedback to the positive and energizing that. And I think that's the missing link. So that's why it's not a new initiative. It's just the way we talk to kids that I think everyone would benefit from in not only our trauma-informed students, but all students to make, to like reconnect them because now someone's celebrating something great that they're doing. And oftentimes, honestly, like sometimes our students that are acting out get the most of our attention, right? Or those students that need it because whether they are bored or struggling. But what about me, the average student, right? Who's just like, enough to get by. I'm good, right? And I'm just going to sit here quietly, right? What about a focus on me? How do we focus on all students? And I think that's where this fits really nicely with our whole child approach.
Great. Thanks.
I just wanted to clarify something I think I remember and tell me whether I remember it or not. I think it was the 22, 23 school year data that we had entered wrong, right? That was, and it was really high because we had.
Entered it wrong.
Yeah, so the reporting wasn't really reliable that year. So these numbers actually show a comparison of reliable years.
Yes.
And things have gone down often more than half. Like the middle school, we're talking 32 violent incidents, 13. And so I just think, yeah, this is trending in a much better direction and not getting complacent, right? And I think some of the new program will be great, but these numbers look much better, right? In terms of just, just thinking about student safety, mental health, and all of the kind of impacts and whatnot. So I just think the staff should really be commended.
Absolutely. Yeah, I sent it to the, when I pulled it all together and saw the comparison, which was a great idea. Thank you, Marilyn, for the recommendation. I got excited. I shared this with the leadership team too. And I said, look at these numbers. This is great. Let's celebrate. But our work isn't done and it could be very easy to say, look, our numbers are going down. What we're doing is working. Let's continue it. But we know that's not enough and we can do better. And we're really excited for that work. Okay, that concludes my report.
So we will move to our first public comment of the evening. The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. Board policy number 0167 establishes and regulates the right of the public to participate in public meetings. We have nobody in person. Angelo, how many do we have online? Four. Okay, so is anybody online has a public comment? Please raise your hand. Please raise your hand.
Just want to confirm, is this new business or is this public comments on other topics?
We don't limit this public comment to topics on the agenda. If you have a comment, you are welcome to comment now.
Comments and questions?
We take comments and questions, however, we will follow up on questions later on.
Got it. Okay, so I'll ask a question if possible.
Can we have your name and place of residence?
Yeah, sure. My name is Roman Gorbach. My place of residence is 123 North Eighth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey.
Great, thank you. Go ahead.
Sure. So I spoke to the tax assessor in Highland Park. I had some questions about certain properties. And based on my conversation, it's been a few months going back and forth. My understanding is that the, the assets are owned by the Highland Park Board of Education. He informed me that in order to potentially purchase or acquire those properties, I would need to speak to the Highland Park Board of Ed. They are not owned by Highland Park, but by the Board of Education. So my question is, what is the process around this? Would it be with this, in this venue, with these individuals? Is this the first time this is coming up? If so, like.
Yes, so typically we don't respond, but my recommendation is if you could email myself, I'm the superintendent Christina Suska, K-S-U-S-C-A at HPschools.net. My information is on the website as well. I can point you in the right direction and connect you to our school business administrator, who's sitting to my right, your left. If you're watching at home, Mr. Rosa, and we can point you, we can actually get some more information and try to address any questions that you might have around a property that the Board of Education owns.
Got it. And just to better understand, in terms of like turnaround time, is this something that I could expect once I send the email to hear back, like within a few days or?
My turnaround is usually within 24 hours. I try, I don't, I go home at night and fall asleep after a meeting, so not tonight. But usually first thing tomorrow morning or sometime tomorrow, I always respond back. Except though, I don't have your contact information and I don't recommend giving it publicly. My recommendation is email me first and then usually within 24 hours or less, I will respond and get you connected to the appropriate person.
Absolutely, no problem. I will send that email. Thank you very much for the, the quick response. And I don't blame you for going home and going to bed. I've been logged in and out about like six times waiting for this. So it won't take up any more time in case others have questions. Thank you very much for your, for your attention and addressing my question.
Thank you. Anybody else online for public comment? Okay, and with no hands raised, we're going to close public comments and we'll move on to our committee reports and recommendations. We'll start with curriculum and instruction.
Curriculum instruction met on July 31st, which was just after our prior meeting. We looked at the end of year benchmark data, both in ELA and math. The literacy assessments are specific to skills taught during that benchmark period. So they're not cumulative in this case. So they're not comparative cross-assessments. We're just really assessing what skills were taught in that time. So at Irving, the benchmark showed growth of students on or above grade level. Bartle, similar percentages of students were on or above grade level as well. In the middle school, sixth and eighth grade showed lower levels of mastery, but results were better in seventh grade. So, but I also think one of the things that the district has really done is actually implement these benchmark assessments and held them consistent to actually start to comparing them across years. And so that's something we're going to, I think, be looking at. But generally, the literacy assessments looked pretty good, K-8. In math, Irving students were successful in the spring as compared to prior benchmarks. In math, the benchmarks actually are cumulative, I believe. At Bartle, second grade looked really strong, but grades three through five only showed about 40 to 50% success. So that's a bit of a concern. This is the first time those grades have used the envision assessments. And they were not using the envision curriculum along with those assessments. So sometimes that means that the assessments are assessing things at a time that is not the same time as they were taught. So I think that is something that Bartle is working on and looking at curricula. But I also think using these assessments and having, for a second year and having teachers kind of get accustomed to them will, will hopefully pay off. I think generally the teachers said the, the problems were fairly challenging in math and it seemed like that was something to kind of aspire to, to provide more challenging problems in Bartle. At the middle school, the final benchmark assessed the standards for the entire year. Passing rates were between 40 and 60%. Most concerning was only 41% of Algebra I students receiving, achieving 60% success on the assessment. I think there was a concern that maybe there was some assessment fatigue, given these were right after NJSLA. But we weren't really, really sure about that. And then as I mentioned, one of the ideas to start to comparing some of the benchmark data across years. Now we've been using these assessments regularly. So we can see if our instructional approach is kind of paying off or students are getting kind of more accustomed or even if there's a little bit of fatigue from just being overly assessed, especially at the end of the year. We also talked about K-5 report cards. Letters will go home three times a year for reading benchmarks. And math common assessment letters will go home four times a year in addition to a list of skills that are strengths and in need of growth. So I think there will be some really nice detail for parents to know what their student, specifically what their students are really doing well on, as well as areas of growth. So that's a, I think, an improvement in terms of communication through report cards for parents. We don't have a sample yet, but the board members really appreciated the specifics would be sent to parents in terms of what students registered that. Exactly what I said. We also talked about AI policy and district plan. The central leadership team will be discussing this, this year. The policy is approaching it as supporting students and how to use it. We discussed discipline and making sure that the first offense was restorative to support students and understanding the policy and how they violated it, especially around AI and just confusion since it can be a tool, but also it can be a violation. And so making sure that it was really, students were understanding kind of issues that they were facing. So what we were looking at was the early draft. And this is something that will be kind of discussed and refined as the year goes on. We also talked about the adoption of the math curriculum. Envision math was used in some classrooms in Irving this past year. It's a possibility to, to be picked up in, in Bartle as well. But they're also looking at Eureka Math. And so I think the idea is to do some sort of pilot where teachers actually try out curricula, maybe for a unit, to sort of assess the utility of it, the success of it, and, and maybe even compare curricula to kind of see which one is really kind of serving and fitting their kind of needs. So that's something that is being looked at this year. And I think the hope would be that next year you adopt a kind of permanent curricula based on teachers really kind of assessing how things work for them. And I think that's it for the committee report. In terms of what we'll be voting on, we have approval of field trips. So there are robotic trips. There's a trip to the farmer's market for nutrition. We have approval of Schedule B athletics. We have approval of university graduates, student teachers and internships and so forth, all through the SCL lab at Rutgers. We have approval of New Jersey School Climate Initiative survey, which aligns with what we heard about tonight. We have approval of the Dreams Program, which we also heard about tonight. Approval of a job description. This is actually something we had, but we were missing the job description for that position. Approval of acceptance of New Jersey Inclusion Project initiative. This is something I think we've been doing for a while and really want to continue. And then approval of agreeing with Arizona State School of Social Work. Any questions?
Questions for curriculum?
I just have one comment. When we think about now that we have the ability to track year over year, the one thing I think we're going to really want to pay attention to is that grade three and five and really mapping them out from a cohort perspective because that's when the gap, like it's a really critical phase and that's when the gap gets wider. And so the comparison is going to be really important as we actually do those analytics. So just my comment.
Your numbers, right?
And just a question, I'm curious about the New Jersey Inclusion Project. How does that mesh with the work that General Lee Consulting is doing and this other? Where does that fit in, I guess?
Yeah, that's so great. So we started, there's, there's, for our three-year partnership, we did year one last year at Irving. So Irving was actually the selected school. So the work is predominantly being done at Irving first. But this year, as part of our year two, at our in-service in September, what you'll see in my board notes for next month on the PD schedule is a training for all staff on inclusion. So that will be going district-wide. And then the continued work at Irving, particularly around preschool, kindergarten, first grade, the pyramid programming in terms of supporting students in preschool for inclusion. And then it's the coaching that happens and professional development that's happening. Really a lot with Child Study Team as well to understand what that model is. The ed services will be pushing out a three-one model for related services, which means three weeks of, it's a three-week on, one week off model. So you get the same services if you read, like for example, speech OTPT. You get the same services in your IEP, but the services are delivered for three weeks straight for students and then one week off where the related service provider is pushing into classrooms, report writing, communicating with parents and teachers. And there's like a lot of that push-in. We're trying to do more push-in to make it more inclusive. So we're, that is the work that we're doing around inclusion, the Inclusion Project. But it's really nice because the work mirrors really nicely with the co-teaching models because that's really about inclusion. How do we help support students in a least restrictive environment by putting them into co-supported classrooms with their general education peers? So it piggybacks really, really nicely. But part of that work with the New Jersey Inclusion Project is for Child Study Team to understand and our related services and our staff to understand what it means to be an inclusion model and then what it means to provide support within there. So we're kind of doubling down on, on those efforts.
I will move on to Equity and Excellence. Equity and Excellence met last Thursday. It was myself, Dr. Suska and Ms. Danio. We really examined some policy alerts from our latest policy alert. That's what it's called. So the first one was Health and Physical Education, which is actually going to be, going to encompass all statutory curricular requirements. So not just the requirements for health and phys ed, but it'll add in things like history of disabled and LGBT persons, financial literacy, infusion of African-American accomplishments into school curricula, Asian-American and Pacific Islander history and contributions, in addition to some other things. There's plenty of them. They're very interesting, including the Instruction Online Disease is one of them as well. So you can go ahead and review that policy. When we did, there was one area that we did ask Dr. Suska to get further information on for our next meeting, which was language around pulling students from recess to complete restorative justice activities as a consequence of something that occurred in infraction of the discipline code. So both Ms. Danio and I expressed concerns regarding the removal of students from recess and asked if such consequences or restorative justice assignments could be completed during perhaps a lunch portion. So like sit, eat, you know, restore and then go out for recess. And so Dr. Suska will look into the language and requirements there. We also looked at inter-districts, public school choice. This was nothing substantive. And we just excluded an optional part about staff, non-resident staff members, childrens, because we have our own policy regarding the attendance of those students. A new policy, students on protection. So the committee reviewed this policy and, you know, discussed some preferences. We would prefer the option to not require parent consent to bring sunscreen to school as that would kind of be difficult to manage. To provide principals the discretion as to which type of sunscreen to permit at school, noticing that there are very, there are many types and, you know, including aerosols, which could be irritants to some students with asthma or respiratory difficulties. So we wanted to leave that discretion up to the principals, knowing their school communities and, you know, the developmental needs and tendencies of those students. And then we also prefer, they had an option in there to revoke a student's access to sunscreen as a disciplinary consequence. And we were like, that seems silly. So we prefer to add a statement regarding instruction about appropriate use rather than revoking the student's right to sun protection, which is the whole point of this policy. And then there is also the semi-program. There was no substantive changes. You know, that we did note when we were doing the budget that we do anticipate a lot less funding coming in from semi due to their, their own internal changes and what they're reimbursing. And we also looked at the AI policy and district plans. So Dan provided a really good summary. Only things of note, aside from what Dan presented, were that we discussed making sure that AI detection software is not the sole factor for determining if a student was involved in academic dishonesty because those platforms can be unreliable. And being mindful of the AI tools that can aid our students with disabilities and our multi-language learners as well. And that concludes Equity and Excellence. Any questions?
Are we required to have that sun protection policy?
Yes.
Yes, it is mandatory.
Seems, just seems really silly.
State law, yeah.
State law that we have to have one. And the school choice also didn't really apply to us. Did and what?
It did, it does, yeah. So these will go through more committees, I'm sure, than just this one. But take a look at it, you know, it's things like, yeah, it's.
Hard to understand.
Yeah.
Well, a lot of it, because some of it doesn't apply to us because they can't pick between one high school or another. They only have one high school, right? But there is when it comes to like, like the staff or transportation, if they go to like a private school or something like that, aid in lieu of transportation or transportation and stuff like that. So some of it is applicable to what we, what we have going on.
All right, any other questions? Okay, Finance and Facilities.
Okay, my thing just timed out. One second. Finance and Facilities met on, when did we meet? On the 12th of August, Anna and myself and Allison joined us a partway through there. We talked about obviously some of the action items on our agenda today. There's quite a few non-public allocation agenda items, like three lengthy ones. So those are just the pass-through that we typically do, often have less than we have today. We did finally get our title, ESEA allocations, but our title allocations, and they are on the agenda. So we were happy to get those. They're a little bit lower than the past, but, but not so far off. If you looked at that, those allocations, Bartle is no longer eligible because of improvements in test scores. So that's where that number was, was less. You'll see on our agenda that there are the salaries. What portion of salaries comes out of state and federal grants? That's listed there. And that the, we're, we're applying for the New Jersey Water Infrastructure Grant. And that's only thanks to John's efforts, John Flanagan's efforts to get all the documents in order for us to be eligible to do that. The, we had a number of policy alerts on that list. Board member election and appointment, duties of public school accountant, legal services, professional services, internal controls. Those all, administrative employment contracts. No substantiative changes in those or modern changes, mostly related. and Administrative Employment Contracts, no substantiative changes in those or modern changes, mostly related to code numbers and some language. 1636.01, Notification of Promotion, New Job and Transfer Opportunities is a new policy. However, it mostly contains processes that we already have in place for how we post new positions and opportunities and so forth. 1648 is a policy to abolish because that was related, that was what we needed during COVID, record-keeping for healthcare during COVID. So that's an abolish, an abolished policy. And the policy up for abolishment. These are all up for first read tonight, I think. And same thing with Budget Preparation, not a substantive change there. The other things we talked about at our meeting was the status of the Champions Program and, and that's our program, our, the company that is now running our after-school program. And they had given us a progress report, which I'm sure has been much updated since then. At, in terms of most of the positions had been filled. Our three site directors will all be new positions, no current staff applied for those positions. But all, those positions have all been filled. And Champion is moving forward to set up ring cameras, to see by getting ring cameras installed to be used for pickup. And they're working on subsidy applications with our families. They even brought in Spanish-speaking staff to meet with some of our families to help them with the process. That's what I had on Champions. Things were moving along well. They were accepting applications and things seem to be moving along well at that point. So it was a week ago. The other thing that we talked about was the, last month we approved the Level of Playing Field. That was, it was a grant and Sean Harrison and, I don't know how to pronounce that name, Mark, Mark Talaro? They went to the Level of Playing Field and they brought back $20,000 worth of sports equipments for our teams and our programs. It was, they were very excited about it. It's great, do a lot of new NFL football pants and Nike cleats and all this kind of really cool, cool stuff that they brought back. And they intend to go back again and anticipate bringing more great equipment to our, our district. So that was really awesome. Under Finance, nothing was new here. We talked about the cell phone ban. The middle school had decided at that point to go with bins to hold students' cell phones rather than last month, we talked about the yonder pouches. But because they have homeroom time now at the beginning and at the end, it made it possible to try these bins, which, given the fact that we'd heard mixed reviews on the yonder pastures, they had heard mixed reviews on the yonder patches. This is, this is what they're going to be trying. And those, more of those plans will be shared with us because after school starts. And under Facilities, the week of, I don't, you can probably tell us, Denise, are we back, are we back open? BARTLE was closed, BARTLE was closed because asbestos removal going on in the, the old walkway area and in the, the bathroom that's being renovated. So they did, we're doing asbestos removal. I guess that was last week. And that must be done. If we're back in the building, that's great. Work on the baseball field was continuing. At that point, 60% of the demolition had been done on the structural repairs at BARTLE. And the anticipated completion date for that is November. But it will, planning's been done, so there should be no interruption to the start of school while they continue to work. And like we say each month about that high school greenhouse bid, still working on it, just trying to figure out a way to get it to come in under budget. John's, if anybody can do it, John can do it. He's figuring out how to scale it back and change some of the specifications so that we can get it in and under budget. And the last thing, which actually I saw on the website, there's now a facilities update link on our website so that the community, the public can follow the progress of the facilities work through pictures. Like we had on our, I think on our board notes or on minutes, we had gotten pictures and now they're on the, on the website for people to see. And on the agenda, let's see, we got, we have our bill list, July 29th through August 19th. The Treasurer approving the Treasurer's report, approving the Board Secretary's report and all the certifications that, you know, say that we have sufficient funds and no major account. Our fund has been overextended. Budget transfers, some checks that need voiding, travel and related expense reimbursement report. One contractor to help us with bilingual evaluation reports. And a lot of contractors, well, actually, a lot of contracts for professional development, many of them being done by Jana Lee Consulting. And iXL training, which I couldn't remember what that was. What is the training for iXL? Can you remind us?
Sure. It's for like a personalized learning platform. The students can go in and they take like level assessments and then they get some personalized learning. So predominantly using that the middle school to get real-time data to support differentiated instruction.
Okay, all right. So there's, so there's a professional development for that. There's also, that's, there's one G is a non-public school pass-through, a non-public workshop. And that's also 10, 11, and 12 on our agenda are all pass-throughs for the non-public schools. So we see what their allocations are. And some of how they're spending those allocations, I guess, certain of the schools, including for professional development, I guess, or technology and security, technology and security. The other pieces on our agenda is continuation of the contract we have for Registered Behavioral Technician. And then here you can see the amounts for the ESEA grant applications. That's our title money. We're voting on approving the submission of the grant applications for these amounts. And then you see the list of how some of our salaries are broken out and the, when they're paid for by state and federal, what portion of salaries are paid for by state and federal grants? And you can see that's a very extensive list. Two out-of-district placements are on the agenda, a legal settlement agreement. And then the submission of that New Jersey Water Infrastructure Grant that we've been talking about. And the last one is a change order for money that is going to the asbestos, the removal and disposal of asbestos. It was part, it's within the money that was allocated, just one particular part, I guess, is coming out to pay for the asbestos removal. And that's the agenda for Finance and Facilities. Any questions?
I do have two questions. One, just, I don't know if you know this offhand, but for Champions, I'm curious about the enrollment and how it compares to previous years. And then for the iXL, is that, is that a cross-content area? My two questions.
So the Champions, actually, I don't have it off, the numbers off the top of my head, but I, they're coming in tomorrow. They're bringing their BARTLE site manager in to meet us all. So they said they would drop off a report. I did invite them to Finance and Facilities at our meeting next week. Unfortunately, they have another open house, so they can't attend, but they're going to bring me a report tomorrow. So I'll have those updates. So we're very excited about that. And iXL, they use it for math instruction. Yeah.
I mean, in the, in the finance report, they said they had 80 kids, but that's like two weeks ago.
Yeah, that was, yeah, so they had 80 kids about two weeks ago. I know their numbers went up, including staff, even I think I sent a report over that two weeks ago, they had hired four of our staff. And then there was a whole laundry list of staff that were like pending their meetings and stuff like that. So I know they were trying to get them onboarded as quickly as possible. The staff that were hired emailed me enthusiastic about it and how great the process was and so far, so good. So I could share some of those positive emails as well with the board. So hopefully I'll have some more updates. I know I'll have some more updates tomorrow and then I'll share them out as I have them.
All right, I'm going to review the personnel. It should just read personnel, not communication. All right. So the number one is approval of appointments. I'll, they are as listed, but I'll shout out a few. We have Rihanna Macau joining us as a special education teacher at Irving School. Welcome. Musa Ali is the boys soccer coach for middle school. We have also Mr. Turner, Christine Crowe, and Erica Hernandez joining us as lunch aid power professionals at BARTLE. We have in addition to, those are all like new or new hires really, or new positions. But you can see N through Z, there's a lot of athletics, volunteer football coaches, cross-country wrestling, assistants, scorekeepers and ticket takers and all of those positions that are listed there. Double A through double E, I'm sorry, double A through double D are also athletics positions. And then double E is tech crew for stipend for Mr. Presti. Number two is approval of resignations as listed, with note, Ms. Donnelly, who has been here for a very, very, very long time. Her last day will be December 31st. So thank you for your dedication to our district. We have the approval of some transfers. So Christine Pearson will be going from high school to Irving. Ms. Davis will be going from middle to BARTLE. And Cornelius O'Keefe will be going from, oh, instead of special education at the middle school, sixth grade math at the middle school. Okay. The approval of PD presenters for a PD Academy. So thank you for all of the staff members that are going to be providing PD as listed, number four, A through D. Number five is for after-school treatment teams. We approve all of these folks so that they are, if they need to have an after-school treatment team, they are able to do so. And number six is the approval of maintenance overtime for Gary Conturci and Wilfredo Roman. Number seven is the approval of some additional instructional assignments. Again, thank you to those of you who are taking on an additional course. We very much appreciate it. And that goes all the way through, yeah, 7A through N. And that is personnel. For policies and regulations, we have the following for first reading, Board Member Election and Appointment, Duties of Public School Accountant, Legal Services, Professional Services, Internal Controls, Administrative Employment Contracts, Notification of Promotion, New Job and Transfer Opportunities, which is new, and Budget Preparation. These were all reviewed by our Finance and Facilities Committee. And then we have one policy, number two, for abolishment, which is record-keeping for healthcare settings in school buildings related to COVID-19. Any questions on policy? Personnel. Okay. At this point, we are going to have our second public comment. The Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. Again, there's nobody in person. Angelo, how many people do we have online? Two. Please raise your hand if you'd like to make a public comment. And with no hands raised, we're going to close public comment. All right, we'll proceed to our action items, curriculum instruction.
I move items one through eight.
Second. Dr. Beatty?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell Dunn?
Yes.
Dr. Pixley?
Yes.
Ms. Prus?
Yes.
Dr. Schoolman?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Ms. Vardman?
Yes.
All right, Finance and Facilities.
I move items one through 19 on the agenda.
Second.
Dr. Beatty?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell Dunn?
Yes.
Dr. Pixley?
Yes.
Ms. Prus?
Yes.
Dr. Schoolman?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Ms. Vardman?
Yes.
Okay. For personnel, I'd like to move numbers one through seven.
Second.
Dr. Beatty?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell Dunn?
Yes.
Dr. Pixley?
Yes.
Ms. Prus?
Yes.
Dr. Schoolman?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Ms. Vardman?
Yes.
And for policy, I'd like to move numbers one and two.
Second.
Dr. Beatty?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell Dunn?
Yes.
Dr. Pixley?
Yes.
Ms. Prus?
Yes.
Dr. Schoolman?
Yes.
Ms. Daniel?
Yes.
Ms. Vardman?
Yes.
Okay. Any Board Liaison Reports?
The Commission for Universal Access is moving forward with making a donation, both the middle school and high school GLOW program, GLOW and GLOW Junior. And I just wanted to highlight that to really support students who wouldn't necessarily be able to access some of the activities without those funds.
Awesome. Thank you for sharing. And thank you to the Commission.
And Commission for Human, Human, bleh, Human Relations Commission. Couldn't say that. Just want to let you know that they're doing a town-wide book read, but I don't have the dates yet. So once those come in, I will let everybody know and they want to make sure that everybody gets involved and that hopefully that the schools can also get involved. And the book for that is going to be Heaven and Earth Grocery Store by James McBride. And they'd also like to get involved with any kind of diversity days that, that we have.
It's an excellent book. I read it. Yes, very good. Anybody else? All right. I do not have a President's Report this evening. Any old business?
I think I have small business. I don't know if it's old or new. Talk a bit about cell phones. So I was on, looking at the starting times and end times for middle school, because I kept starting middle school. And I was, yep, and I was very pleased to see that 2:58 to 3 o'clock in the middle school is now officially designated device pickup time, which is great. So it's on the schedule. So moving to bins, I was wondering if you could explain, Dr. Suska, so what happens if a student arrives late or has to leave early? How do they get their phone?
So my understanding that they're going to sort of pilot in this is if they arrive late, it goes to a storage that will be held in the main office. And then during that two-minute time, they come down to the cafeteria where that rolly, so the rolly carts will come in and they will pick up their device from that location. If they've con to their first period class and it's there and they have to leave early, Mr. A or an administrator can escort them up to that classroom and get the device from the classroom.
Great. Did we, I honestly don't remember if we talked about this, or we probably should have, but smartwatches and earbuds? How does the policy apply to those?
So that includes those as well unless they're designated as part of their IEP, IHP, or 504. So if they come with a smartwatch or earbuds for the elementary and middle school, they have to go into either the little coat rack, shoe rack thing in BARTLE or into the locked container at middle school. At the high school, they'll keep them on them.
And my last, my last bit has to do with the, the nurtured heart program. And I just was, had a question about the application of the, of the absolute no approach to the devices. And I just want to clarify, of course, you don't want to give attention to a misbehavior at the same time. The policy is if someone's using their cellphone in class not supposed to, take the cellphone. So is that still going to be followed even if this absolute no, which sounds very interesting, gets, you know, sort of becomes our district-wide clause?
Yeah, so they would still have to take the device and follow the proper, what we have in the regulations in terms of a logical consequence as a result of it. So they're still going to follow that. The absolute no comes in to reach, to, to not, because students might engage in conflict about it, right? Because they don't want it taken away. So for those that reviewed some of that discipline data where I shared my screen and we looked at it, a lot of it was like resistance to give it, resistance to give it, resistance to give it. That's that energy, that absolute no. So how do we redirect them to the yes? But again, there are still logical consequences that come of it. So the idea of nurtured heart is not to say that they can't, for lack of a better term, like get in trouble for something, right? It's like if they have a weapon or something like that, I'm not going to not discipline them or, you know, like discipline them or not address the issue in the moment. It's, it's a lot about if there's refusal to do so, how do we redirect them to make sure that we're addressing and supporting the positive things that they're doing? Because if they're breaking down a phone or doing something when they're not supposed to because they brought a burner phone or something like that, then we really have to look at, you know, like why are they using it in the moment, right? Are they taking it out because they're bored? Are they taking it out because they're having, I don't know, an argument or something like that? Like what is the why for that as part of it? So, you know, we haven't really tackled the idea of what the nurtured heart approach looks like in that space. Though, so far, the four trainings that we received, a lot of it was around things like kids cursing or kids misbehaving, kids acting out, that kind of thing. How do we, because that's what we see a lot in these discipline infractions is like, well, they cursed 65 times and now I have to remove them from their learning space and give them a restorative arise or out-of-school suspension or something like that. And how do we, how do we not give? And how do we, how do we not give energy to the cursing and redirect them for the positive? So a lot of that training comes in, so I would be curious to see how they'll, they'll blend together. But the, the regulation is the regulation. I mean, and it's the administrators' responsibility to hold staff accountable to making sure that regulation is enforced.
Good, thank you.
I had a question about the lock boxes, actually, because I'm just
I hope it wasn't about nurtured heart because I'm still learning.
No, I'm just curious with the lock box, are they individual lock boxes for the phones or are they like one giant thing and then?
So it's one thing, it kind of reminds me of a chroma cart. So I know people at home cannot see this, but to the board, I'm going to point to the cart that is next to Angelo over there. So it's something similar to that, just a little smaller. So they're kind of like what our old-school chroma carts or laptop carts would be. And in there is bins for each student, so they drop their stuff in a bin that's going to be labeled for them. You know, with something that can easily be changed for a new student coming in. So they drop their stuff in the bin and then it's locked up and that's it, so they can't get into that cart. And at the end of the day, the cart is open, their bins are put out, they grab their stuff out of the bin, then the bin goes back in. And that's, that's how it goes.
I can't believe I never asked this previously when we were talking about this, I think because I didn't expect us to do the, I think we were sort of thinking we were going to do the pouches.
Yeah.
Have we had our attorneys look into our liability? Or if we take private property from students?
There's, we have, we have no liability.
We don't?
Nope. And a few responses to recent emails showing that if there is a concern because some people don't like the policy and want it even more strict at the high school, an option always is that you do not have to send your kids with the devices. That's always an option as well, but you're right, there is no liability for taking them. There's no liability for having them, if parents, guardians or students don't come to pick it up, it just stays locked up with us, but we assume no liability.
But and if something?
Happens, like if it's in, if a staff member takes it and it breaks in their presence or something like that, they drop it, we have no liability for it. That's not going to happen, we're not purposely going to be dropping. There was a very long and comfortable pause and I just wanted to clarify that we are not going to be throwing phones and breaking devices.
Okay, any other old business? Any new business? Okay, I move to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.